Hey, meeting is being recorded. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission regular meeting for November 11th, 2021. Roll call. Chair Simpson here, Vice Chair Kai.
Here.
Commissioner Waidola.
Present.
Commissioner Giles.
Here.
And Commissioner Vance. And Commissioner Brown. If they show up, we'll mark them when they arrive. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the approval of the October 26th regular meeting minutes. Before we call for a vote on the consent agenda, does anybody have any comments or edits?
So that's why I was asking Erica for the last version of the comp plan. I just, what's reflected in the minutes, I think is a little more pared down on, on the section regarding page 52 regarding Sherwood, Sherwood population is becoming more ethnically diverse. So I was trying to just see if what it says in the minutes sums up essentially what the result was.
Okay, well, we can certainly pull them from the, we do, do we need to have these approved prior to these action items going to the council, Erica?
No. It's just the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so we can go ahead and, pull them and allow Commissioner Kai an opportunity to, review the last meeting minutes and the item, and we'll bring it back at our next meeting. All right.
Thank you, sorry for that.
No, that's, that's why I'm glad to see everybody's reading the minutes and we have action items from them, so that's good, thank you. Next on our agenda is the council liaison announcements, Counselor Scott.
Hey, good evening. We have a busy council meeting next Tuesday, week from tonight, starting at 7:00 PM, and that will be live streamed, of course, on the city YouTube channel. We have three resolutions and three ordinances that will be part of that hearing. Point them up right now. Resolutions, so we will, we'll be making some updates to the police policy manual. Those are coming through from changes requested by the police department, as well as our police advisory committee, which, which everything goes through there as well. And then we also have a resolution adjusting our annual adjustment for garbage and recycling rates. And then a third resolution adjusting commercial water rates for the upcoming 21, 22 fiscal year. And then our three ordinances are things that this commission should be very familiar with. First readings all around of the economic opportunities analysis adoption, which the commission forwarded on to council last week or two weeks ago. Also, the first reading of the Sherwood comprehensive plan adoption, which again came, came up through you all. And finally, also through Plan Commission, the first reading of the residential design standards. So a lot of activity at that council meeting here on the 16th, so hope to see you all there. And, and as a reminder, public testimony, is allowed and encouraged and accepted up, up till 24 hours before the meeting. So please submit that in writing through the city website on any of those items, or, or just general comments if you're interested in making some, some other general testimony to the city council. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Light is certainly full. Staff announcements, Erica?
Good evening, Commissioner. So I just have a few announcements this evening. The first announcement is that the Community Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee for the Sherwood West Project met last week on November 3rd. And their next meeting is going to be held on December 15th. And just a little project update about where we're at in that project scope. We are now kind of, we are now putting together some scenario planning for the Sherwood West area. That looks kind of at all of our broad concept themes for that project, which you can find online on the project page. And kind of, and you know, we're starting to look at, you know, what the housing would also look like in that area. Last week, I sent out the residential design standards and the EOA that is going forward to council next week. What I haven't sent to the commission yet is the comprehensive plan document. And I'm going to be sending that out right after this meeting. I just received it today. So if you have any comments on those documents, that are outside of the realm of, you know, the Planning Commission, you can send, those comments to me directly, and I can get them into the record for city council. So just remember, Planning Commission, you know, did make a recommendation to forward all these documents on. So if you do have a comment, it will be kind of your, your personal, um, public comment.
So I guess my understanding was from our last meeting that because we were approving it, with expected changes to be in the document, that if in reading the suggested changes, there is a, errors and omissions from what the Planning Commission recommended.
Yes.
So if, if as a member of the Planning Commission, what we discussed becomes an error or an omission on the staff's part in what the council's reading, then that can be submitted. That, that is an actionable item for staff based on, based on the hearings record that we held ourselves. If as a planning commissioner, you have a concern about the document itself in saying, and I think the EOA, I think one of the comments that did come up through the commission was one of the commissioners expressing a concern that, it is a document now that COVID's with us, we probably need to look at revisiting because it could be considered updated, or out of date very soon, if not already. And that's an opinion that you might want to express to the council as a citizen. And that can be done either through Erica or through the regular website channels. So if you have an opinion about any of, well, you can, as a citizen, you can comment on anything. But it's always nice to be clear if you're speaking as a commissioner technically, or as a citizen, separately, so. But we do, as a commission, need to read for errors and omissions, correct Erica?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And then our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for December 14th. And currently on that agenda, there are two tentative public hearings scheduled.
And is that the, one of the agenda items that large blue, folder we've had for the last?
Yes, so it's the Cedar Creek multifamily prod, project is one of the public hearings.
And there's no expectation that'll be continued again, so.
Right.
This is the heads up that, this is a, the staff report will be modified based on submissions from the applicant since then. But the, from my understanding, the bulk of the project itself is similar to being received already. They're not sending out new big sheets or anything, right?
Right, that is correct.
Okay, so for commissioners who want to get a head start reading over the holiday weekend, you got no other Thanksgiving plans, there's a big blue, bag in your, in, it's in my garage, but whatever.
Yeah, still have mine. Erica, did you, did you say you're not gonna be sending out your big, like, report with your analysis of all the things that they hit or don't hit? All that's just the same?
We, I, I think we're gonna be modifying, that is a good question. I think we just might provide just a, like a Planning Commission memo, like, update, depending on the change, but I, I don't, let's just keep it.
If that, well, if that's the case, can you send me a copy of the last one that went out?
Yes.
I have, I still have all the, all the developers' materials in the bag, but I don't, I don't think I have, because it got continued so many times, it was like, ah, they're just gonna send a new one. So, all right, thanks. Yeah, and you don't have to print it, you can just email it to me, it's fine, unless you're doing that for everybody, yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure that everyone has the, you know, correct staff report and any updated findings, for sure.
Thanks.
Would you mind taking a poll, just an email poll to see who has it? Because I'm, I'm mentally trying to remember if I recycled the staff report with the meeting that it was originally held, or if I pulled it and put it in the blue bag. So I, it might be helpful for everybody just to have an offline email for, to check on it. Thank you. Our next agenda item is community comments, and community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda, and must be submitted in writing 24 hours in advance of the scheduled meeting time to be included this evening. Erica, did we receive any community comments?
We did not.
All right, so now we're gonna go into the public hearing. So, right now, we're gonna call the public hearing on, LU 2021-015 SP Oregon Street Business Park is called to order. Maintain compliance with public meeting laws in pursuant to House Bill 4212. This meeting is being conducted electronically. The public notices for this meeting stated that citizen comments and testimony for this public hearing item, had to be submitted in writing at least 24 hours in advance in order to be included in the record. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions if any by the body, hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. Applicants 30 minutes. As previously noted, public testimony for this hearing was required to be submitted in advance in writing. Rebuttal from the applicant is the remainder of their 30 minutes. Final comments by staff 15 minutes. Questions of staff if any by the commission. We will then close the public hearing, no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant's discussion by the commission. The Planning Commission's role in this hearing is a final decision, and any appeal on the matter would be to city council. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report, which was included in the materials for this meeting posted on the city's website. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes an appeal to city council or the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I will take a roll call to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please state none, or indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Commissioner Giles?
I have no conflict of interest, and I plan to participate.
Commissioner Waidola?
None, and I plan to participate.
Commissioner Kai?
None, and I also plan to participate.
Chair Simpson, none, and I anticipate, I will participate. And does the applicant wish to challenge any planning?
Commissioner Vance is here.
Oh, Commissioner Vance? Oh, you came on board when I was probably reading my page and a half of readings.
Commissioner Vance? I've been here a little time, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you. We are going to be, so I'm asking if you have ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest on the Oregon State Street Business Park?
I have no conflict of interest, and I do plan to participate. You guys will let me?
Oh, yes, please, please participate.
Yeah.
All right. Planning staff will, and I believe that's you, Eric, will now present the staff's presentation for this evening, thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Chair Simpson and Planning Commissioners. It'll be another short evening for me tonight. But yeah, the, the applicant for this application has requested a continuance. That continuance is to December 14th of this year. And then they also told the 120-day clock to, buy the same number of days of the continuance. And so that new 120-day clock is February 23rd, 2022. So stay on track with that 120-day clock as well, so.
Can you say that date again?
The 120-day clock is February 23rd, 2022.
Does the date, maybe I'm crossing the two. It says April 6th, did I get these two?
Yeah, I think it, should be just, it should be flipped, yeah. The, the applicant, the next hearing that will open tonight, for 20, LU 2021-012, Sherwood Commerce Center, that one is to April 6th, 2022.
Okay, so they are backwards in our packets then. Nope, I'm just missing, okay.
The num, the,
Oh, I found it, I got it.
We listed 15 before 12, so maybe that was the mix-up in the, in the, in the agenda. So we're doing LU 2021-15 now. And then the next one is 12.
I got it, 20, February 23rd, perfect, thank you. So, it has been, so we need to, take a vote on the recommendation of staff and the request from the applicant to continue this hearing and toll the 120 days, to February 23rd, 2022. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission, continue the public hearing on the application for Oregon Street Business Park, project number LU 2021-015 SP, until December 20, or sorry, December 14th, 2021, at the request of the applicant, with their knowledge to extend, or with their approval to extend the 120, day tolling deadline.
Excellent, is there a second?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to continue LU 2021-015 Oregon Street Business Park to December 14th. Any discussion? Take a roll call vote, Chair Simpson, aye, Vice Chair Kai?
Aye.
Commissioner Waidola?
Aye.
Commissioner Giles?
Aye.
Commissioner Vance?
Aye.
Motion carries, excellent, we will move on to the second one. And for the sake of brevity, Erica, am I allowed to, omit the, the details of how, of how the meeting goes? When I read this?
You, you can do that, you can omit that.
Okay, thank you. Since I'm repeating the same thing. Okay, the public hearing on LU 2021-012 SP CUP is called to order. Maintain compliance with public meeting laws in pursuant to House Bill 4212. This meeting is being conducted electronically. Public notices for this meeting stated that citizen comments and testimony for this hearing item had to be submitted in writing at least 24 hours in advance in order to be included in the record. The public hearing this evening will consist of the staff report and discussion and vote by commission. The Planning Commission's role in this decision is to make a final decision, and any appeal on our action is to city council. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you will receive. In reading, reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report, which was included in the materials for this meeting posted on the city's website. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes an appeal to city council or the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I will take a roll call to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please state none, or indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Commissioner Waidola?
None, and I plan to participate.
Commissioner Giles?
None, and I plan to participate.
Commissioner Vance?
None, I plan to participate.
Commissioner Kai?
None, and I plan to participate.
Chair Simpson, none, and I plan to participate. And asking if the applicant wishes to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate. And I do not believe the applicant is here this evening, so we'll have the staff present the staff report.
Yep, good evening, again, so yeah, this application has been, the applicant has requested a continuance to January 11th, 2022, with the 120-day clock being extended to April 6th, 2022.
All right, and just for clarity, we did not receive citizen comments for this matter or the other one, which is why we didn't call for my, I, I had admitted it on the previous hearing, but I had contacted Erica earlier this evening to check on citizen comments, and we didn't receive any, so.
Sorry, we, just to clarify, we do have one public comment, I, I don't think Erica knew about it, sorry about that. We do have one comment, which we can, we can send to you. I think because the continuances, they weren't, they weren't included, but it certainly applies, so we do have one public comment.
And it will be included in our complete packet when it comes to hearing before us then.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. And, you know, I can likely pull it up pretty quickly if we need to, and read it if, if we need to.
Does it pertain to the continuance itself or the application?
It pertains to both applications generally.
Okay, so not to the continuance itself?
Correct.
Okay, so then we are, able to proceed then. All right, thank you. With that, we have a motion to continue this hearing also.
Eric, just so, just so I know, is there, is there no project name for this one, for this, at, at this time?
It should be Sherwood Commerce Center is the, is, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's just, it's just not in the packet, so I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yep.
Okay, I move the Sherwood Planning Commission, continue the public hearing on the application for Sherwood Commerce Center, project number LU 2021-012 SP slash CUP, until January 11th, 2022, at the request of the applicant, and, at the, with their approval to extend the 120-day tolling period.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we continue. LU 2021-012 SP CUP Sherwood Commerce Center. Any further discussion? Take a roll call vote, Commissioner Vance?
Aye.
Commissioner Giles?
Aye, sorry, I voted twice because I was on mute.
You got one check mark next to your name, though. Commissioner Waidola?
Aye.
Commissioner Kai?
Aye.
And Chair Simpson, aye. Thank you very much. And again, the comments, the citizen comments will be presented to us with our full packet, so we are good to go there. All right, moving off public hearings, on to new business, and the new business is our Planning Commission's SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And the staff has included, what we did last year, and hopefully does, provide inspiration for what we want to add to this list for this year. So just throwing a couple things out, does anybody have anything, pros or cons, and then we'll figure out if it's a strength, a weakness, opportunity. Just, just looking back at the year, what, what hit you first off the top of your head?
One thing before we jump into that is, whenever I do SWOT analysis, I always, you know, the strengths and weaknesses are looking internally, and the opportunities and threats are looking externally. Is that how everyone else approached, or is that just how I'm approaching it?
Yeah, usually.
That sounds good, I had, had not heard it analyzed that way, but it makes perfect sense, so thank you.
All right.
Internally versus externally.
Now, a couple, a couple of notes I put down, I guess, if no one else wants to jump in on strengths, I want to engage the commission. We are a talkative group, and our meetings go quite late sometimes. I do put that under weaknesses as well, that we sometimes have long meetings. I also added, and I, I don't know if this is true, but if my numbers are correct, I think we have at least four members that haven't had any official Planning Commission training. I know we were looking at that before COVID set in, and so now that we're hopefully coming out, knock on wood, maybe staff can help us get something arranged. And then another weakness I had was the open position, unless something has changed, it's been open for a few months. And then I'll stop there and let other, some other people chime in. So.
Yeah, I was, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, the, the main weakness I have, and I've hit this before, but it, it feels like we have a marketing problem of, you know, making, and, and granted, I understand this is a chicken and the egg problem, because what we're talking about and what we're dealing about is, is, is usually very technical. One of the things, for instance, when I was doing the school bond oversight committee, I pushed for those billboards that were outside of the schools saying, here are the things that we're doing, here's the status of, like, we, I was trying to do, city marketing, and I, I wish we were better at condensing, the issues into, things that could be more consumed by, the, the community. You know, like, the comprehensive plan's a great example, right? We, we worked on that a lot, it's, you know, 100 pages or whatever it is, and I worry that it will not be read by anybody that doesn't have to. So it's just, it's a marketing problem, but it's, and, and I, I don't know the right solution on this. I would look to the pros for this, because I don't know if cities ever do it well, or if we're an outlier, or if that's just, you know, I, I, I've experienced it in my own life of trying to get people to participate, and it's just, it's difficult, so.
I, I think, I don't think we're an outlier in going to other outreach on community events, either held by Metro or the county. The percentage of participation is, I guess, it seems sad, but in some of the Sherwood things that we did, especially when we did the outreach for the comprehensive plan, our community engagement was so much higher than percentages that I've seen from other things, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, and I get that, and I don't, I really don't want that being taken as a slam, it's one of those things where I'm like, you know, i- if I had to say a weakness of internally, how do we get more of that, or at the very least be able to push, point to it and say, you know, like, for instance, I, I know that the city council puts their agenda up, you know, in certain bulletin boards around town, right? Can we get more of those? Could we put our stuff up there? I, I, I don't know. Is there a way to?
Yeah, see, and I see, I didn't take it as that, I took it as, I think it's an identified weakness, and I think of it as an opportunity, because with new faces on the commission, new faces on the commission, yours as one of them, this is an opportunity for us to think of avenues that we haven't been able to pursue in the past. And so I get excited when I see your marketing ideas for, how do we jazz up a document that we need to get people to look at? Where do we put it in the Gazette, or where do we put it in the, um, whatever document we need to, to get people to be engaged? I mean, I've tried, um, I've tried tongue in cheek ideas of saying, let's tell them it's gonna hit their pocketbook and just say, you know, this could cost you money, please read, and then see how many people, you know, do we get more, you know, but that is only tongue in cheek, because that is not an appropriate use of it, but I don't know. I don't have, like, your marketing mind to be able to figure out what's an eye catching way to get someone to be excited about, um, design standards or.
Yeah. Well, you're, 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 you're partially right. Pictures help, um, but I, you know, frankly, um, I also am not the new guy anymore. I've been here over a year now. So, uh, I, uh, I'm, I'm a quarter of the way into my term. I'm an old timer.
There you go. But new avenues of outreach and I think that is an opportunity that we need to explore. Definitely. All right, someone else had a comments on this?
Yes, this is Dan. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Waidola, a lot of his points. Those are very good points. Uh, but also just kind of add on weaknesses, first bullet point, lack of social interaction between commissioners is definitely true. Uh, but I would also add, like, in community, the community folks, people attend those meetings, you know, the, and, um, they're around, they can interact, they can engage a little better as well. And that's a weakness, uh, that we have, not that we have much, too much control over it, but that's, that's a weakness. I also agree on the training, and so like Commissioner Giles just said, um, you know, I've been, he, he and I both now have been on here a little over a year, and there are still things that I don't, um, totally understand, the, the, the mechanisms of different actions that we take, um, why we do certain things, certain ways. I'm sure there's a great deal of history as to why this body of government is set up in such a way that we do certain things. But like, for example, a good example is tonight, um, we had two public hearings, and we had to open public hearings, read a whole long script, just for the sake of giving them more time to do it. Why do we have to do that? What happens if we say no? Exactly, like, nay to that stuff? Does the applicant lose their opportunity to, like, I don't, there's things like that I don't quite understand still, the process, because I just don't know that I've, and maybe we need, um, maybe we need, uh, trainings kind of beforehand of, okay, we're gonna have this kind of action coming up, let's have a, kind of a side training as to what exactly that is, why are we gonna do it the way we're gonna do it? And, uh, the ramifications either way. And, but I will say, Erica, you've done a pretty good job in your prep notes to us, um, of giving us the alternatives that the, that this, uh, committee can decide on, and I've appreciated that, but I think it's just kind of a broader scope in addition to that as well. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, one of the threats that I would like to identify is being made irrelevant by the state government. So when we, as we are, um, you know, people often think that we have more power than we do with the House Bill two thousand and one and some other thing, where it's like, well, um, it's not really up to us anymore. We're just trying to figure out how to, how to stay in, in, in touch with that, and so it's a, it's a threat where it's, if it's being all handed down from, from Salem, we're not, you know, we're, we're really going through the motions, right? And, and frankly, it's a waste of, of time, the more that gets prescribed by Salem, right? Because then all the cities will look the same in this area and they will all, you know, behave essentially as, you know, it's just, we're not needed as much. Uh, so I put that as a threat, um, the more that things get.
Definitely agree with that.
I would, I would bold face that, underline it and put flashing lights around it. We probably had, I don't know, a very long, probably to the consultant's dismay, conversation about this with our Sherwood West group, because Sherwood West, we're trying to come up with a plan for residential zoning in an area that, as we know, House Bill two thousand and one takes your residential zoning and decimates it. And so we're looking at, um, what can we do as a community to, um, not have the state run ramshot over what we're doing. We don't have annexation control anymore because the state took that away from us. And I don't know. I don't know how to, how to fight that threat.
Well, we have to email our higher, you know, state representatives and senators and get other people to do that. And, and it's unfortunate, increasingly, our system of local governments with certain powers delegated upward is tipping around to higher governments with powers delegated downward, and that's a very unfortunate, in my view, trend in our society. But that's the case here in Oregon as well.
Not to solve the, the issue here, because obviously we can't, we're just getting our, our SWOT analysis done, but maybe in the future, we can invite, uh, League of Oregon City's lobbyist to a working session, so we can, you know, vent on them a little bit about how we're being hamstrung.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say as well. I know the city engages with lobbyists, um, I don't know if it would do any good for us to add our voice in as well and just say, hey, this is the problem, but.
Wheel's not squeaking, it's not getting the grease. So then Watson County lobbyists as well, I'd, I'd, I'd reach out to.
Those are great ideas.
Power in numbers a little bit.
Yeah.
Why lobbying exists.
So, because here's the real threat on that is, you know, imagine us having zero power whatsoever. You're gonna take a group of five or six of very engaged citizens that are willing to volunteer their time, willing to look at all that, and just, you know, make us feel unempowered to do anything. And so we'll just say, all right, well, um, you don't need us anymore. You know what I mean? Like, all of a sudden, you're taking five people that are really engaged and want to make this community better, and you are, um, disempowering them so that they can't really do anything. So all, then all we're doing is the face of, uh, hearing complaints. So, anyway.
Yeah, or, or forced mandate of approving applications.
Yeah.
I agree, well, wholeheartedly. I will just say, and this is my cynic hat, the people in Salem do not care one iota about that. They just don't. I, they, they don't care that local government is disenfranchised. They don't. They're, they're all about, you know, ruling from above, and they're on a steadfast mission to uh, achieve social engineering through, you know, through power in Salem. And I, we can, we, we and the LOC and anybody else can go to them all we want and say we don't like it, and they're gonna say, too bad, here's the next law. Until people vote for different leadership in Salem, and I'm not talking about parties, I don't care about what party people are from, but the people in Salem don't care about local control. They care about Salem control and, and accomplishing their big social missions through centralized government control. So, uh, I'll take it off my soapbox now. And with that, with that said, we still just need to make our voices heard. I mean, it's, it's regardless, we still stand up and make the voices of our citizens and our, our commission heard to, uh, the state, knowing that it's, it's a lost battle, but it's still, we need to be, speak up. Yeah, I think we need to speak to our citizens and say, if you don't like this, you need to change the way you vote for, for state representation, because, especially when you're talking about a super majority. You know, that I think is the, you know, the super majority in Salem feels like they have a mandate to do whatever they want. And if you have even just change a few seats to where you don't have a two thirds majority, then all of a sudden now compromise has to happen. I'm, I'm a fan of split government, because I think that's when you get the best. I don't want either party or any side to have dominance, because that's when the train runs off the tracks. When the two sides are forced to work together, you actually get moderate legislation. Sorry, I'm on a political speech soapbox now.
I was about to pull you back, because we're doing a planning commission SWOT, and we can't solve Salem, but I, I, to, to say that, I, I, and I'll call Commissioner Vance next, is I think we make our voices heard, but I think our job, critical job right now is to be as creative as we can within our own code to ensure that those mandates that are sent down from Salem, that we act as a buffer to our citizens, that when we see something like this coming down and we can't stop it, but we can get in front of it and adjust our codes so that the least amount of impact is felt. If we ta- if we do nothing and take no action, we're gonna have a worse, we know we're gonna have a worse parking problem. So let, as a commission, let our voices be heard to staff and council, so that we get our TSP updated, so that we get parking in place, and so that we can take the little bites back of, of controlling our own destiny. If we can't fix everything, we can control some of what we can. So, Commissioner Vance.
Completely agree with all comments. Um, this is just, just to say, this is one of the reasons I've been kind of an advocate of pointing out, um, when we go to market, like Commissioner Giles, kind of you, you said, or like when we publish in the Sherwood Archer.
Commissioner Vance.
Yeah, am I gone?
Oh, now, now you're back now.
Okay, I don't know, sorry, guys. Weird internet stuff. When we go to publish things in the Archer or some other venue where we're seeking public comment or, or whatever, I, I've been kind of a fan of, well, let's, let's point out some reasons that's happening behind this. Um, you know, residential design standard, I know it's totally separate in, in many ways from House Bill two thousand and one, I get it, right? We've been talking about it for a long time, so, but as I mentioned last time, for me, it, it's kind of tied to that, because it can also serve as a mitigating influence on some of what's happening in two thousand and one, and so it was useful to point out um, in those publications, guys, also, community, there's this, there's this bill we have to deal with, and I think that stuff's gonna keep coming up as we seek public comments on applicants that come in and apply for things and start blaming us, so why are you allowing this kind of stuff to come in or whatever? Well, we have no choice. And here's why, and here's who you can contact, if you like it or you don't. So that's, that's one way we can kind of go about it as well, by view. But I totally agree with what you guys are all talking about. I think we're on the same page.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Kai.
Yeah, not, not to necessarily con- continue, um, the, the, the type of discussion that, that Counselor Scott was bringing up, but an important point along with that, and, and I, and I believe that he makes a very great point, and I think that's the, the, the threat from the state is, is a primary concern that we should all be concerned about. But I think it's important to mention as well that as far as getting, getting the right people, as far as representation, the, the primary force behind House Bill two thousand and one is running for governor. So, I, I, if, if we have that as a, as a primary concern, um, you know, let's make sure not to vote for that person.
That's a very valid point. All right. So, um, back to our, just, just one more thing, and I don't know how, it's a strength that I wanted to put out there is the, the, it's, the diverse backgrounds that each one of us brings and our experiences makes us a stronger commission. You know, we're in a, it was already been mentioned tonight that we're very engaged strength and weakness when it comes to talking, but the documents that we have going up to council right now, the EOA, residential design standards and the comprehensive plan, those documents are a magnitude of ten better because of the people on this meeting tonight, the, the input, the changes, the just the opinions that were brought forth and the outreach that you did within your own community networks to bring forth your ideas and opinions. So strength, strength in this experience and diversity background is strong, is, is, is huge, so. So, I wanted to, diversity and experience, and we are.
We get along, we get along pretty well, too, I think, generally. I mean, we've had, I think, I think there's been opposing viewpoints on things at times, but it's always been cordial. Um, I think we work through it and usually things end up better because of it, and that's been a good thing.
Absolutely. I think having a commission that can, can agree to disagree is a blessing. I mean, we, we work hard and we, I don't think anybody feels like they can't voice their opinion out there. So, thank you. Um, anything else on the?
Is someone capturing all these notes, or?
Erica, and I, I've, I've put some stuff together, too. I've, I'm trying to write it down as we go.
Yeah, I, I just took some of the, you know, engagement with the lobbyists, I put that under opportunities, same partner with, uh, League of Oregon Cities and Washington County lobbyists to petition state, so that's where I sort of ended up in that one.
Yeah, and I put new avenues of outreach to our community, because that, that has to be, it's a miscommunication is a threat, but it's doing it right is an opportunity.
Yep. And the trainings, don't forget about training stuff.
Training is a weakness. I've got that with two stars next to it. I, that has to be something that we do. Just trying to think, because we tried to do it before we had to do, um, a PUD, and I don't know how people felt about that before our last PUD hearing. We, we had a work session before the hearing, and it tried to went through a process of what a PUD was before we walked right into a hearing. I don't know if people felt good about that, if it was awkward or too much information, right, as you're walking into a meeting. So it's been a few months, so.
Yeah, that, that stuff is good. I mean, I think the first time I ever ran into a PUD here, I didn't totally understand. I mean, I, I, I remember, I can't remember which one it was, uh, but I, I was kind of more focused on, okay, are they meeting the, the code stuff here or not? I mean, what's the, but I don't think I totally realized that if they're requesting a PUD, then they have to provide some public benefit. And that gives us flexibility and to put requirements on the borrower to make sure that's occurring. See, that part, I don't think I totally knew, so having these kind of trainings going forward from there is really useful. Um, that, okay, well, this kind of a meeting, you're looking at this kind of thing, and you know, that, that kind of, yeah, exactly.
It's be nice to have the work sessions, like, two meetings before, if we can look forward, so we have a chance, so that when we get the packets that we're digesting it.
That being said, I do feel much better now than I did a year ago when I first joined. It's kind of deer in the headlights, like, oh, my goodness, it's so formal and everything is recorded, and what am I gonna say that's gonna be stupid? You know, yeah.
I, I gave up on trying not to be stupid and just.
Yeah.
I, I try to be, I just try to be honest with myself and the, go forward with that. And your comments about the two hearings tonight, that was really valid, because, you know, having to read the whole thing twice, it is a lot, but there's, there's section of it that has to be done, because we have to disclose ex parte contact for every hearing that we open. So, I, I do, as, as I was reading it through the first time, I was thinking, I should have asked Erica if we could have a revised script for continuances, because continuances shouldn't have everything that are in it. We should open it, we should take any public comment, and then we should continue it, or we should ensure that the public comment is in the record, that it doesn't pertain to, um, disagreeing with the continuance, because that's, that's the only thing that's important. If, if someone had had an objection to the continuance, we should have taken that, but since that wasn't the case, the public comment can go into the regular record. But the continuance itself, just to answer the questions, just so I don't forget, is, an applicant is allowed a continuance in our sta- and the rules of our meeting is they, the first time they ask for a continuance, they are granted it. And then if they ask for a second continuance, there has to be, um, some sort of situation or circumstances outside their control that would allow us to, um, extend it a second time. And I did mention to Erica this evening to ask. And I did mention to Erica this evening to ask Josh Soper for direction about when the, when does a continuance then become a denial? And they have to resubmit their application. So I don't know if you had a chance to ask Josh about that or we'll get that information brought back to us at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll definitely, we'll bring that information back to you at our next meeting.
Because.
And is that because it's so expensive for them to go through the application process? Once you start it, there's probably these times that they have to meet things.
Yes.
And so they need our blessing to extend it beyond those times? What would there, what, what kind of reason would you think of, or have you ever seen it before where they said, nope? And they have to completely start and reapply, the, they being the commission? Or the commission has said, no, no continuance? Why, why would that ever occur?
I, I, no one's ever, I don't think we've ever had a no, that I recall, that we haven't continued. Because applicants are usually ready to break ground. Oftentimes, they'll just pull the application if it has become something that can't be resolved through staff. But that also, I think, was in the day when the staff's pre-application meetings weren't as comprehensive as they are now. And then the application was submitted without all the details being understood about what they were gonna, what parts of the code they were gonna have to comply with. One really important part of this, which I see now there's an actual form, is tolling the 120 days. And that's state law. If we as a city accept a applicant's application and we have deemed it complete and are ready to go forward. We have 120 days to complete our hearings process up to and including the appeal to city council. And if we fail to complete our work within that 120 days, the applicant can file a writ of mandamus against us at Luba. And their application is deemed approved. And it's remanded back to the hearings body. And all we can do is approve it. There are very few actionable items that we can take after that. That's why we have to open the hearing and that's why we have to have in the record their request to continue it and their approval to extend the 120 days so that we stay within their deadline to have a, kind of like a swift hearing. They have a deadline. So that's, that's where the 120 day comes in.
So in other words, if we're gonna, it can't be us causing the breach 120 days, the applicant has to want it. And we have to show that publicly that that's the case.
Correct.
Yeah.
So if we.
And kind of rubber stamp sounds like, but it's a formal deal to make sure it gets done.
Correct. And there has been instance where we've had to, as a commission, we couldn't make a decision and we had to continue it. And if the applicant doesn't want to toll the 120 days, we have to either make a decision that night or we could have been potentially called in to have a special hearing the following week so that we could still maintain the 120 day rule. So it's a pretty hard and fast rule. And we have had one case here in Sherwood where we failed to meet the 120 day rule. The writ of mandamus was filed and the applicant was allowed to develop as is without us being able to file any other special considerations on the application because we failed on our due diligence. It was probably a couple of months before I went on commission the first time, maybe a year before I was on the commission the first time. So it became a very detailed education training of why we do it. Because the consequences are, are.
I appreciate you, Erica, and the rest of staff for keeping us on track and within those. Okay, and thank you for the mini training session.
Yeah, there you go. So that's why we do it. 120 days is 120 days unless they extend, extend it. So last little quickie is, what, what have you been most proud of that we've done in the last year? That, a significant accomplishment. And I just want to name the, not the EOA, because that wasn't much, but the comp plan and the residential design standards at council are two of the three things.
Yeah, agreed.
And then always having, having applications that council is, not having to have appealed to them. Or appealed to Luba for that matter.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, those two come to mind big time. Big successes. A lot of work.
And goal looking forward is, and this to me is huge. And I don't know if I want it to be finished in a year, but I would like the commission to have a look at Sherwood West after it goes through the CAC and the TAC and there's a recommendation. Because this is the next big project and it's gonna be the first one that comes through under House Bill 2001. And so looking to the commission for creativity in how we can help put together and plan the next part of our community if and when that happens. So, so that, that's a, that to me is a major goal. That's, that I see as the commission needing to look forward to the future on that.
Yep, yep.
Any other thoughts or ideas about updating the transportation plan to ensure that street widths and parking are accommodating to meet what we need to, to. I guess to my mind, it's to help battle what the state's done in taking away our ability to require parking. All we can do is require streets wide enough that'll allow parking. So I don't know what else to do. Any other thoughts on that?
No.
No.
And fill our commission seats.
Yeah.
Do we have any commissioners' terms expiring in the next 12 months? Probably don't know that off the top of your head.
I don't, but I think we do.
Uh-oh, okay.
Well, mine just got renewed in June because I think I was a fill-in for an open spot a year ago.
Okay.
I think I just got renewed. You're stuck with me for a little while, I think.
All right, I like that.
The guy that joined right at the same time as me, who's not on, I can't remember his name, but he's no longer on the commission. He was only in it for a year. So that one is probably open.
Yeah, um, we had the commissioner that moved to Idaho, yeah.
Yeah. Hey, we're doing remote meetings. Can you still, can you still be on the commission if you're in Idaho? Do you have a house here?
Do you have a house here?
I, I did do some of our meetings while I was in Idaho. Over the summer.
All right, so Erica, on a sidebar before we wrap up the meeting, can we look to having Josh review our hearing script to abbreviate it for, for continuances? I do know we need to open it and take appropriate public comment, but if we could cut out half of that, that would be lovely. All right.
You know, I've, I've got one random thing just for Erica, maybe Eric or somebody, I don't know. So I noticed in this packet here, Harsh Investment Properties is one of the applicants. I, I don't know if this is coincidence or what, but at my work landline, at my desk, I've been getting like fax calls from Harsh Investment Properties. I don't know why. Maybe it's a total coincidence, but that's what comes up in Colorado, I try to answer, it's like a fax beeping at me. I don't know how I got, I, I don't know, that's my work landline. I, I don't, I can't imagine it's connected, but, you know, I don't know. So maybe, maybe if you talk to him, at least mention, hey, this, I can send you my work phone number. I mean, don't send the fax, this phone number is not getting through, whatever it is. Just let him know, you know, but it might not be. I, I think my number was a little over seven years ago, is, it was one of our in-house at the bank, one of our commercial appraisers. So, you know, from time to time, I do get calls, random people like that. But anyway, it just was so coincidental that I've been getting these fax calls and then, oh, look at this, it's an applicant too. Yeah.
Commissioner Vance, and is, is any, excuse me, an easy solve for that is forward your desk line to a fax number at your office? If you see it come through again and then have it print out and then call them and let them know.
Oh, that's, that's good, that's a good idea. Yep. Thanks. If I can find a fax machine, I mean, it's not 1995 anymore, so it's a little hard to.
You gotta find the time machine first, then you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's so funny, we don't have a fax machine. So we have two, yeah, we don't have, we have six office buildings up in our one room, in our location. And none of, we don't have a fax machine on site. You have to go to our other office, three miles away to find a fax machine. Don't try and fax me anything. All right, any other questions, comments, answers? And we have an updated contact list. So if someone had random questions, they could reach out to me or to another commissioner to not discuss specifics, but just to ask general, general questions about process. So anytime you feel something pop up that is of concern, go ahead and reach out to us and always staff is available.
Is that on the website?
Not my, not our contact information, no. But our, our city email addresses may be available. I think, but it, it just goes to planningcommission@sherwood.gov or sherwoodoregon.gov. All right, if there are no other comments, we can adjourn the meeting. All right, well then, hearing done, I will go ahead and adjourn our planning commission meeting. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.